Very good. This is a public hearing, starting with the Planning Commission. It's Wednesday, May 15, 2024. Again, welcome to all of those who are here in person and who are joining us through Zoom. We'll take a minute and I'll ask the Commission to introduce themselves. We're having Jody Stones, who's our recorder, is going to be helping us tonight with the public hearing part. For everybody's information, we'll have the public hearing and have public comment on those issues that have been published. We'd like you to take no more than two minutes, a person, to address any one of those topics. And if you want to address them all, we'll give you five minutes to do that, if you want. We'll have that public hearing until all the public comments have been heard. There will be no cutting off, other than the imposed time that we'd ask you to observe. And then, following that, our practice is we go into our regular Planning Commission meeting for the night. We have a pledge of allegiance and invocation. And then, our topics, we'll go into discussing those items that were part of the public hearing. And we'll be taking a vote on those items amongst ourselves. That's a public vote. And it's in the form of a recommendation that we make to the City Council. We're not a deciding body on these things, but however the vote goes, then we present that to our City Council. And they won't have another public hearing. This will be the public hearing for these matters tonight. We'll be presenting a report to them, along with your names, and it's just a summary of the comments that were made. And they will then hear that, hear our recommendation, and take a vote on yea or nay as to each of these items that we're going to be covering tonight. And that'll be the final vote on it. That vote could go counter to what we recommend, or may vote differently, or the same way. We don't control that. It will be all up to the City Council. And theirs is the vote that counts. Ours is a recommending vote to them. So, just so that you understand the process, and you're all welcome to come to that City Council meeting. Now, the City Council, they won't hold a public hearing, per se, but they always allow two minutes for public input from anybody who is there at City Council meeting, who wants to make a comment on anything. It could be the business that they're going to be discussing that night, or something entirely off their agenda. They usually don't have further discussion on it, but they will take public comment, if you choose to make that. So, that's kind of the process that we have. Do you have any questions to that at all? Okay. Lori, I'll start with you. We'll just introduce ourselves.
Okay. I'm Lori Thomas. I live on Oak Jive. Moved to Woodland Hills in 1975.
For your newcomers, her father was the first mayor for Woodland Hills. So Lori's got a little bit of longevity with the city here, and we value her judgment. She's seen a lot of changes over the years, and we're glad to have her service.
I'm John Stout. I live up on Lofer Drive, by the park. I've been here for about four years in the city, and been on the Planning Commission for a little over a year, year and a half.
And I'm Wayne Franson. I live just a couple of doors down from Lori, over on Oak Drive. I've been on the Commission for a long time. So I'm glad to serve the residents of the city, and we're certainly open to any comments that anybody has at any time. So feel free to contact any one of us at any time, if there's some issues that are Planning Commission issues, or the City Council is open also to any of your views or comments on any topic that has to do with the city. So, next.
I'm Severn Johnson. I've lived in Woodland Hills since 2010. I've been on the Planning Commission, not as long as Wayne, but I've been on the Planning Commission for 10 years.
I'm Simon Kirschman, and I live just at the bottom of Summer Creek, so in that new area. Been about three and a half years, a little left of John. I just started this in January, so.
When you said you were an extra, you're really a member.
He's an alternative. And so when, like, for example, Larry, Henry, I don't see him, as he is absent, then Simon will be a voting member. But our alternate members are always welcome to part of the Commission and have input to that, but they don't vote if we otherwise have a full quorum here. When somebody's missing, then he has a vote. So. What we'd ask you to do, we'll first hear comments from any of those who are zoomed in here, and I would ask you to speak to the microphone, say your name, and then your thoughts and views on any of the topics that we're covering tonight. Let me share those with you, just in a summary form, so that we all have an. The one issue that we'll be discussing is a request for zone change on a lot on Broad Hollow. It's currently zoned to R1-2, which means it's single-family, but two acres, as it was zoned. And the request is being made to rezone that to an R119. For your information, pretty much, it's a split of the lot down the middle. You can see the request, the application, online, if you choose to do that. Or we have Mr. Flannery here tonight, who can further explain that when we come time for our business and discussion. The other item that is part of our public hearing is a change in our ordinance to allow what we're referring to as detached accessory apartments. That's different from another part of our ordinance we have, which we call accessory dwelling units. Accessory dwelling units are inside the home, part of the home that's been set aside for rental. And this is detached accessory apartments, which allows a construction outside the home of an apartment. You have to meet setbacks and other requirements, having to do with building, has to be built according to code, et cetera. Pretty much the same standard as a home is built, but if the lot is large enough, we're looking to change our ordinance to allow accessory apartments to be built. It does go against our ordinance, but we'll change that, because it's no longer a single-family resident lot. It's a two-family resident lot, but it's being built under the Single Family Resident Code. So it can never be separated from the house, as far as dividing it, and now you've got two. You're selling one piece of property to somebody else, and they're keeping the home. That's not allowed, but an apartment on that lot, controlled by you, would be allowed. So that's the other item that we have under consideration. And an ordinance for that has been drafted, and again, it's online. Hopefully, you've seen it or know about it.
Wayne?
Yes?
It might be appropriate to let them know why we're doing it.
Did someone request it?
There's an interest in our state to have more housing available. And so, towards that end, this is a way to partially accommodate that. You could rent this out to your children. You could rent it out to a family member. Doesn't make any difference, but it's additional housing, it being apartment. It wouldn't be rented out as much as a house would. And so, it's a way of providing additional housing in our community, as well as throughout the state. Other cities have this ordinance, where they do allow accessory apartments. We've never delved into that until now. And so, that's the purpose of that, accept what we're calling an accessory apartment, to allow that for additional housing.
And that has nothing to do with number one, right?
Correct. The other item for discussion tonight will be a short-term rental consideration. Up to now, the city has not allowed short-term rentals. And our ordinance defines short-term rentals as 90 days or less. But in this proposed ordinance, we're talking about 30 days or less. Now, we know that this exists around the city, in some way or another. People are renting portions of their home as what's called a short-term rental. They're doing it contrary to our ordinances, and this is, as we've looked at it and thought about it, we wonder that this might serve some of the same purpose for additional housing, for people to make income on a short-term basis, so to speak. It's not permanent housing for somebody. It's short-term rental. And other cities, again, throughout the state, do have this provision. And we're suggesting, in our ordinance draft, that this short-term rental can be, again, an apartment inside the home, or an apartment outside the home, or potentially, a property owner with a home. As they get older, they may build an apartment for themselves and rent their home out. So there's a number of options that are available in that scenario for short-term rental. So we're seeking, again, public input as to.
Short-term.
And any consideration that you might have for that.
May I? Is that what some people would consider, like an Airbnb-type rental?
Yes.
Okay. That was the, okay.
Up to a number of months ago, there was a way in state code to prevent short-term rentals by saying they could not advertise on Airbnb. That's gone away. That ordinance is done away with by the state. So that's no longer a restriction. A person can advertise for a short-term rental on Airbnb sites and the like. So just adding a little bit to your question.
You mentioned, excuse me.
Go ahead.
You mentioned that some people are in violation of this, that you are aware of. What has happened with those situations? I mean, are they issued citations, or?
If we receive a complaint from a neighbor, we'll act on it.
Okay.
But we don't go around searching for those situations.
Okay.
Okay? There's a whole process, and it's not necessarily easy. There's a registration with the city, has to be inspected, meet code, and other things. So we've had some people come to us and ask us about doing that. And like I said, up till a couple of months ago, the state law prohibited it if it was being advertised on an Airbnb site. That's gone away now. So the city still hasn't decided whether they're going to implement some regulations to allow it, and that's what we're doing tonight, taking public input and then making recommendation to the City Council on that particular thing. So those are the areas that we're looking for public input. If you have input only one thing, that's fine. Lori, I'm going to ask you, if you would, to keep some notes of people's names and who are in against.
Number three. Number three. You should have addressed.
Accessory buildings.
Oh, I'm sorry. Thanks, Severn.
Number two and three.
Okay. One other area that we're, it's number three on our agenda, has to do with accessory buildings. We do allow accessory buildings in our city. They have to be, a site plan has to be provided, and we review it to make sure it's according to our zoning codes. What is being proposed, one of the criteria for accessory buildings, it has to be 20 feet away from the main residence. We see a number of situations where there's small buildings, and what we're proposing is if an accessory building is under 100 square feet, that it be allowed to be closer to the home, and even attached to the side of the wall of the home. A lot of people buy these polyplastic things to put shovels in, and maybe a small lawnmower or something, and our current ordinance requires that little structure to be 20 feet away from the home. We're proposing that if it's 100 square feet or under, that it be allowed to be closer to the home, if the owner wants it to be. So that's the other item that we'll take public input on tonight. Again, your views, if you don't have a view on it, that's fine. If you think it'd be a good idea, let us know. Again, we will take your input and, together with ours, as we make a decision, and then provide that information to the City Council for them to act on. So, thanks, Severn. Any other questions with those items? Jody, let's start with Mr. Gibb there. If he has any comments that you would like to make, Mr. Gibb, on any of these items for a public hearing, you're welcome to share those.
Good evening. My interest is in primarily item number one on the agenda with the zoning change for the property on Broad Hollow. That property abuts my back property, and I just want a little better definition of what they want to do with that. You said dividing it right down the middle. I assume that means lengthwise on that two acres?
That's correct. My understanding, is that correct?
Yes, that's correct.
Yes. So it would be divided lengthwise, so there'd be two exits onto Broad Hollow from that lot. Now, let me add one other thing. If you have not had an opportunity to look at that online, while he wants to change the zone to R119, which would give him smaller setbacks, each of those lots would be approximately one acre in size, and he's proposing not to reduce them from that size, as that lot currently would be divided down the middle.
Okay.
So that would be a bit of an exception. It would still be an R119 zone, but to be able to have the setbacks that are in that zone, which are smaller, but that lot would not be further divided than going down the middle.
That leaves a fairly narrow frontage on the road. Do you have an estimate of what that frontage for each lot would be?
It would be 100 foot. The lot is 200 feet wide now, and if you divide it in half lengthwise, then there'd be 100 feet on each side of that lot for frontage.
Okay. My main concern was just whether or not they were going to try to make a flag lot of the back part of it, but that doesn't sound like that's what they're doing, so.
No, and flag lots are no longer approved in the city, either.
Okay. Well, I don't have any objection or any problem with that. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you for your input. Any, I see a Sarah up there. Do you have any thoughts you want to share on these items?
No, I was just also, I'm also a resident on Broad Hollow, and I was just curious as to what the goal was. So they are planning to put two houses here?
That would be the goal. They could sell one of the lots, if they chose to do that, but there'd be a house on each lot.
Are there any changes to the size of the house when the zone is changed?
The house can have smaller setbacks. So it depends on the person, though. It would be zoned R119, so they would have to follow the R119 setbacks. And those are maximum. They could be smaller, if they chose to do that, but they cannot be larger than what the R119 zone allows.
Okay. So the size of the house is not as important as what the setback is?
Generally, yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. I see a Jeff C. there. Any comments you'd like to share?
No. My question was whether he was intending to sell one of the lots, but it sounds like once it gets rezoned, he'll be able to. But you guys have answered that, so I'm good to go.
Brian Hutchins, you have as much right as anybody else to share your thoughts on it. Do you have any comments you want to make for a public hearing?
I do not.
Okay. I don't see any others zoomed in. Jody, is that it? Okay. Very well. Appreciate the comments from those zoomed in. Why don't we start? I'll be here, Carrie, with you, and just go down this side, and then we'll come back up this side for a public comment. Unless you.
I'll have to.
Yes, just come up the seat and make sure one of those microphones is turned on. It's a green button on the bottom.
Well, before I make comments, I have a question about the setback. I should have known how to handle it, but what are the setbacks? Can you get that information before we make comments?
Yeah, I have it right here.
Okay. If you share those.
So in the R119, there's a 30-foot setback, and then 20 and 15 on the sides. Whereas currently, it's 50 feet run and 30 on the side.
30 and then 15 on each side.
Yeah. And with the depth of the lot, and we're happy to put in this, as far as any sort of things that would have to be, whether it's sold or not. That's not our goal. Our goal is to get one of our children, as it was a poor little family, instead of doing an accessory apartment or building something apart, this way, they're in their own home and play all night. So we would keep the same 50-foot setback, because it's going to be a big lot. And we could even go further, I mean, if that helped. So the 20 and 15 kind of needs to stay, and that is because it is 100 feet. And I, right now, for the Highland, we've been there 32 years. When we moved out there, it was nobody really out there. And so, our lot right now is 100 feet by 400, almost the exact same with these two. So, and that's the same setbacks there on the side are actually 20.
20?
20 feet.
From the front?
We'd be 50 feet from the front.
Right.
So we'd be 50 feet from the front, but we'd be 20 feet on one side, setback, 50 feet on the other side.
Why are there 200?
That's the way the zone.
That's the way it's designed.
Yes.
So in other words, more technical, it's 20 feet from the tulipses, who are to the west of you, and 15 feet from the next house.
So 15 feet for that other lot, and it'd be 50 feet. And then that one, and you can determine which side you want it to be on. You have to talk to them.
You're saying, basically, there's 35 feet between the two lots, between the two houses?
Yes.
It depends, if they're, depending on which side they choose, for the 20-foot setback or the 15-foot setback. The smallest it could be would be 30 feet, if they choose 15 feet on the inside.
And that's if it's two R119s. Where what we're talking about, that's an R1-2 on each side of the current lot. And so there's really going to be more space between the new lot and their neighbors.
So between you and us, if we did the 50, the smaller side, and then the 45 feet from your house to the beginning of the other house. And because those are already your setbacks, 30 feet, or two. So if we have one side, it'd be 20, and that side's going to be 50 feet from that house. And the one thing, I mean, we have it now, and I understand, and I don't, I don't, we want to be good neighbors. Again, it's kind of just the same thing as, when we first moved to Highland, it was all one-acre lots. And then as people came in, and it was the same thing, it was like, you know, kids were, you know, they can't afford to live here, you know, they're like too close, trying to figure out how to do that. Then they went to, I actually sat on the Planning Commission before we moved to Highland. And then it was these smaller lots, and they leave these open spaces. You know, so that's how they, you know.
But.
Anyway, I don't want to get there, other than to say that that's, those are setbacks. And I don't know, I mean, we, our plan isn't to sell them, but I do understand that, you know, that does leave that open for somebody else to come in, so I'm not naive to that. But I don't know, Wayne, if there's something that can be put in as a note on those lots that could only be split? I mean, what, down the middle, you couldn't try and do anything smaller? I don't think you can, just because of the frontage. You can only get two frontages, you know, two lots only in a period on that. So to get it any smaller than that really is not.
Because is R119 open to making a fifth-acre lot?
No, that's the smallest.
Okay. So one acre is.
Right now.
Right.
Right now.
Right.
Okay. Who knows what the future holds in store, but right now, that's our smallest size lot.
And isn't that basically a half-acre lot?
It's 19,000 square feet.
19,000 square feet.
Which is just.
Just under a half.
Yeah.
What is?
An acre is 45,000 square feet.
Okay.
So.
Okay.
I appreciate that further explanation. And maybe, before we go forward, and maybe I should have done this before, do any other, are there any other questions that Mr. Flannery or we can answer for you, as, to help you make comments, one way or the other, in this?
Do you have a rigging panel of the proposed houses?
No, because we need to get the zoning change before we can go in and do any of that. But like I say, it's to split it right down the middle, so you have two one-acre lots. It actually ends up, I think, being .97 something. So you're just, which is exactly what I've got in Highland, almost the exact same. So yeah, as far as, other than, you know, we would keep the setback, so it'd be 50 feet back from the road that matches every other house on the street.
But there'd be nothing, if you were to sell the homes later, there'd be nothing that somebody could add on, all the way up to, add on to the front?
Not with today's standard.
Well, if he built it at 50 feet back, it could go 20 feet.
Correct, but it's not saying that.
Not likely, but.
In the future, somebody couldn't come along, and our zones changed, and put an apartment in the front part of the home. So we.
Yeah.
I think the one thing, and maybe you'll get into this on the accessory, because we've looked at other places, under the county, and then in Mapleton, and your accessory apartments have to be in the back. They can't be in front of the main residence. So that could be something that could be put in that.
Our sense that.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I haven't seen any of that allow us to be at the front, so that would never, and then they still have to follow the same setbacks that are currently there. So yeah, to have somebody come in, unless you put an asterisk or something on that R119 for that, that said, you know, it has, this has to be 50-foot setbacks, or.
Everybody has to understand, that's today. The City Council, next week, next year, could change all of that, if they chose to do it.
Right. So.
So my question is, we've rezoned, you asked, just like we have any more questions for.
Okay.
You want to rezone it, and you only want to split it in half, but next week, it'd be catastrophic, and if you guys die, and the property gets sold, somebody else now has R1, I think they could put three, they could come in and request to subdivide the three.
You wouldn't be able to do that because of the frontage?
Again, that could be changed.
Right.
That's the point. Any of this can be changed in the future.
Right. But what I'm saying is, and I mean, we know what you're trying, we hear what you're trying to do, but things change, even in your plans. Even if the city doesn't change what they approve tonight, or what they recommend, the plans for that property. the plans for that property, who owns it, could change. So we don't have any real assurance that what you're saying is going to, you know, make any sense.
Well, I, I think, I think the point we need to make here is we're talking to R one nineteen. And so you can't have a five lot. And so there is no way to have three R one nineteenths on that and still have the required frontage and at least nineteen thousand square feet.
Oh, that was nineteen thousand.
The most you could do under one nineteen are the two that they're proposing.
But just, just let me clarify. You're, you're right as it is now. But a year from now, the city says, well, we're going to have quarter acre lots. Okay, that means potentially all these one acre lots around the city, two acre lots, could all be potentially quarter acre lots, if that's what the city council chose to do.
Assuming there's no home right in the middle of the...
Correct, providing that, you know, you could, you could do that, but let's assume they're vacant lots.
Right.
Potentially, they could be further divided up. Not in today's standard, but in the future. And just think too, that all these people up and down Broad Hollow bought their R one dash two acre lots. And now we're looking at changing that that, that size of those lots. So I just want everybody to, to understand that change, changes can occur that change whatever decision is made tonight to make, make it different. The city has done that time and time again. It wasn't until maybe eight years ago or more that we had an R one nineteen. We didn't have an R one nineteen zone.
That's my question.
So, again, it's one of the changes, and, and that's being applied now in this situation. And I'm not saying it's good or bad, I'm just saying it's a change from what we had. So, anyway, go, go ahead, Carrie.
Okay, thank you. I, I've mostly had questions, but, um, my main one that we haven't addressed so far is what other homes in our area of, you know, that section of Woodland Hills, because not, obviously Summit Creek is different. Um, but, uh, that have this one nineteen. Are there any other?
No.
Homes that have, have this zoning?
It's, it's further down in the Summit Creek.
In the Summit Creek?
Yeah, down Summit Creek.
Yeah.
Four Seasons.
And Four Seasons.
Four Seasons, by the church.
Where is Four Seasons?
By the church.
Oh, okay, okay. Okay, I, I, I think, I can't speak for everyone, but I just think, um, it's a little unnerving to picture. Because like you said, I, we've met you several times a little bit. We've, we know your kids that are here, and I'm sure you're wonderful people and have, and have good taste and all that. Our, our concerns are, what is it going to look like? Is it going to look like you've plopped two, you know, great big huge homes in too small of a space? Do you have any idea of your square footage of your home?
Sure, I can, I can, what we, what we'd like is, we want a small house. My wife's very private. So that house is where we're living, and when the grandkids come, we would, we would probably build some type of a gathering behind that to where they all go, and that's where they make the messes and everything, and then we can leave it.
So you're talking about an accessory dwelling unit behind your main home?
Behind, behind our house. And then the other house would be a smaller one, because that's, we got a, a daughter and son, there's two little kids just trying to get into a home, and it's just, you know, it's ridiculous out there right now.
Right.
So they would build probably just a two thousand square foot house with a basement. And, uh, you know, that would be the case there. I, I, I understand the concern.
That sounds small, but our house is two thousand square feet with a basement, which is...
Well, it'd be, because our, because our set, the setbacks are, you know, are smaller.
Yeah.
It's, it's going to be more of a longer house
Okay.
than it is wide.
Right, yeah.
And, and so, and especially with all the trees.
Right.
I mean, we're living on that exact lot right now with the neighbors next door. And, yeah, we're, we're close, but with all those trees, it being, you're going to be fifty feet on one side, forty, forty-five feet on the other side between houses. I don't know if you would even notice the difference, honestly, trying to look through, you know, ten yards, difference of trees versus the other. So, um, that's, that's our, our goal, and that's, that's why it's taken us so long to finally do something, is we've been looking all over trying to find where we can... And we've had it all along, it's just if we could split it. And, and around that area are a lot of one acre lots. I think Hayes, I think the one you just walked there, just way across the street. One point two.
Cray, Cray.
Cray, I'm sorry, yeah. Yeah, and then to the front, if you look at the map and you drew a line right between yours and, and our, our lot line and went straight across that, everything is two acres above that. I'm the only two acre piece left there, other than Gibbs' home.
I don't under the Gibbs sign.
And then right next to Gibbs is a lot that is point, it's under an acre, and it's only a hundred, uh, I think it's a hundred and two foot frontage.
What, sorry?
Right around the corner, and I think it's up, the corner lot. Yeah, right behind.
Oh, okay. Chevy and Jeff, Chevy and Jeff that live behind Sarah. Is that what he's talking about?
Yeah.
All the Gibbs. That's a great big huge.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
So, in, in that sense, it kind of fits in, right, we can almost fit in better with, with all that right there than everything going up. And that's, that's larger. So in trying to keep it, you know, things, you know, equilibrium, you know, that's where I thought that this made sense to do, than if I was there up at the top or in the middle and trying to do that or whatever, so... Because we're, we'd already have a one acre lot, actually two. I think Ken, yours is just over an acre.
Let's go ahead.
Anyway, Carrie, do?
I, I, just, yeah, thank you. Just basically concerned about it looking squished. And, and again, I'm sure you're wonderful people. Hopefully it would be, if that passes, it would be done in good taste. You know, what am I, I, I can't control whatever you would do, whatever you would build. Uh, that's just the concern.
What, do you have opinion on whether you would be for or against the zone change? I mean, that's what we're, if you don't, if you don't have opinion on whether that's fine?
I, I have concerns, and I have, you know, sure, we'd love, just like the Wildings wish we hadn't built our home next to them. Uh, it'd be nice just to have a little bit more space, but I guess I'm not going to state an exact opinion right now.
Okay.
I should have gone last instead of first, very...
Thank you.
Very well, thank you. Ken?
I think I've had all my questions answered. I think I just, my thing, thing about it is, you know, I can see the lot split. You know, my dad's a developer, so I understand it. There is no guarantee in the future what happens with lots and what happens after. And so, at some point in the future, it will be sold, probably. Well, the question really becomes, I think, do you want to allow this exception where I think primarily up that road, it's never been that way? And I, and I think it should probably be kept that way, in my opinion. I remember when I was looking for lots, I asked those same questions about bigger lots, whether they could be split, and the answer was no, because that's the way they wanted to keep it. So times change, I understand that, but... Probably makes it cramped up there, and that's not why we moved up there. There are other places where we, you know, make exceptions here and there, so I understand that, but that's not why we're up there, so... You know, if, if I could split another piece of land and have my daughter come with, I wouldn't build where I'm at right now if I were to do that. I think I would find a place. I don't think this place is suitable for that. In the zoning laws, it could be allowed, I just don't think it's right for that. Historically, things will change, so, you know, things will change. There are other places you can do that. So I think, you know, it's not unreasonable to say that you could probably find places for it. Okay. I think I've had all my questions answered. I think that's just what it comes down to. There's no guarantee what happens after the split, so... This just comes down to, do we want to allow that up there or not? Okay, thank you for your time.
Yeah, thank you. Wendy?
I know, I'm setting it on myself. Okay, um, I, there's nothing else in that area that's R one nineteen. I'm pretty opposed to just making this island of an R one nineteen. And it gives me heartburn because I love, I, I don't know you, but I love your daughter and her husband, and, but it just doesn't fit that neighborhood. And as I drive by every single day, I'm going to drive by that every single day, and I'm going to see four little houses in a row. And that's going to change the look of it, and I'm not the only one. There are quite a few people that are going to drive past that that bought their properties, and some in the not-too-distant past, with the understanding that it would be zoned the way it's zoned. And it is going to change the look for them and the feel of that neighborhood. We do own the property across the street, and it's because we don't want anything there. So, I mean, but, I mean, I am totally in favor of personal property rights. They own that property, they can develop it how they want with the zoning in place. But I oppose changing this zoning, because I just think it um, messes up the expectations of all the neighbors around. And, um, it doesn't fit that, I just don't think it'll fit the way the neighborhood looks, and it'll change the look of everything. At the very least, I would ask that the city, if the city really wants to accommodate this request, the rezoning should be keyed to approving the building lot, I mean, the site plan. So that, um, that's not the end, I have fifteen seconds. So that it doesn't get rezoned until the site plan comes in and the construction is started, so that you can assure, so we can assure the things that he's saying, like they're going to setback fifty feet. Because it would be easy enough for them to sell that property, not them, but, I mean, something could happen. I'm not saying that I don't trust you. But, um, and the new owners wouldn't be required in any way to do all the things that these people say they want to do. Anyway, I'm on record as opposing the rezone. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Wendy. Rick?
Can I talk about two of them?
Come, yes, come on up to the mic, Ron.
I'll be really short. My, my, my comment is related to that whole thing, uh, property values and things like that, because the whole area, when you move up, up here, you like that open space, you like the place where the animals can hang out and stuff, and the more crowded you get, the less that happens. Uh, and so when you look at buying one of those houses, on our lot in particular, and you have two new drives coming out right in front of our property, it kind of restricts how you're going to enter our property and exit. So that's one of my major concerns with that. So I'd be, I'd be against it. I don't, I'm not against you. Because I'd like to take our lot and split it in half and have two of our kids move up there too, but you wouldn't let us get away with that problem.
Doing your kids, you might be right, right? You got some great kids.
But the other, so the other issue is the shed thing. I like that idea. I am for that idea. The, the hundred foot, I think that's a good idea.
Okay.
And that's, that's it.
Thank you. Coming up to the back, Grant, you?
My only concern is just precedence. And what does that mean for the other lots around that area? Because there's, there's still empty lots kitty-corner, I mean, back from us and some other things like that. So does that set a precedence that, and more and more people will have an opportunity for those other lots to split? And what, what does that do for property values and other things? So that's my concern. Thanks.
Comment, I mean, are you, you, again, just want to express your opinion, you don't have thoughts one way or the other on?
I, I...
Okay, that's fine. It's fine, thank you.
Wayne, do?
Yes.
Can I have a ref?
Please.
So, um, I, I very much appreciate all the comments and the input, and, and yes, one thing I do understand is if, I mean, could we sell those to, you know, get this done and then sell them? Yes, that could happen. Is that the plan? No, but I...
And I trust you that it's...
Well, yeah, and it wouldn't be as, that, it's not in the plan, but, but I also want to address that to take care of that, so I liked your idea of, you know, if you can do that with the zoning and, and the site plan, I have no problem with that whatsoever. The one thing just is, you know, to address on that in the looks of it, so on that two acre piece, the way it is right now, we were, and you tell me, maybe I couldn't do this, but a circle drive on that, so you have, you know, it's a two hundred foot, so come in one.
One circle that, that approaches both of the homes?
Well, no, I'm talking about if, if it stays the way it is. I could do a circle drive on that, correct? So just addressing your concerns of having two exits and entrances come into that, we probably would, even if we didn't do the split. Because that's what we're covering here.
It's just one family, well?
It's one family, but it'll be a large family. And so, so part of our goal is, is for us too, and, and keeping the fifty-foot setback is for that, when family comes, you know, is, I want everything off the street. I don't, I don't want it on the street. Right, exactly. So, so that's the one thing that we would love to make sure that we addressed in that. I mean, if we had two, you know, two on there, they are both one acres, and we're pretty much surrounded. What I'm looking at, and I know it's setting the precedence that you said, is we're not talking about R one nineteen above, above our lot. So it doesn't take in your lot or anything else, uh, to that, to the south of that. And I don't know how you guys, the recommendations you would have, is just, it would cut across, straight across, or are we just talking my lot only right now?
We're talking your lot.
Okay, so if you can just do my lot, then, yeah, it does set a precedent for somebody else coming. So, you know, that could, could change. Right now, the only other lot, two acre lot that's empty, is that one that's just kitty-corner to, to yours. Uh, and, and the rest are, so, so to address back your concerns of somebody coming in and, and doing this all the way up the street, it's not going to happen, because you don't, you're not going to have the frontages to probably do that, because where the homes are placed. Now, I haven't done that site plan on all of them to see where the homes are, but just from looking at the parcel map and where the homes are set, and even driving down the street. So I, I agree with you. I mean, that's part of what we love up here, is the trees and the seclusion. And that's where I just driving by there, and if we had, there's two houses there versus one, I mean, we meet all the structural, you know, the CCNRs and whatever, so, you know, the homes would, would blend in and match with whatever else is, is there.
Yeah, it's just, that's just the closeness. It makes everything entire. You're going to be higher on both sides. You're saying forty-five feet, that's not really that far. You're talking about trees in between houses, but in forty-five feet, you don't have that much.
Well, that's, they can, but, I mean, they don't need to be. So, and our goal is not to tear down anything, and I think most people on their side.
Let's not get into arguments here.
No, I appreciate that.
Expressing views and opinions.
So, so, anyway, no, this, uh, that I...
Obviously you're for it.
I'm for, I'm for it.
Okay.
And just, I mean, it's, I would go with the opinion of the, the planning committee, if there's anything that could, you know, make some of their concerns, you know, a positive, where that wouldn't be able to happen, or whatever we could do to make sure that it is just, it's split down the middle, that wouldn't happen, otherwise, or do the site plan and the zoning. So we're open to all of that. So, anyway, appreciate your comments.
Okay, thank you.
Tell me your name.
Mark Hamrock. My wife is Linda. And we live on the corner of East Broad Hollow and Settlement.
Madison.
Okay.
Yeah. Our concerns are the same that have been voiced. Linda and I bought the property about a year and a half ago with the understanding that why we, one of the reasons why we like... One of the reasons why we liked was the neighborhood. An acre plus. I think ours is a little over an acre. And, you know, the serenity of the trees. Theoretically, we live on a corner lot, so even though ours is only a little over an acre, we've got an access driveway on the other side, we could theoretically sell ours, the other half of our lot, and do the same thing. So our concern is just a density issue. If other people... Once we set a precedent, you get some sharp developer with an attorney, the precedent is already set. So it's gonna change the neighborhood eventually, just by this one decision. I have nothing against you folks. I don't know if you've explored other alternatives. I mean, if the building plan included housing over in a garage with a separate entrance, that would solve, you know, your issue as far as, you know, the two homes. But what are the minimum requirements? I guess I have one question for the R-119 for each residence. I mean, is it 1,000 square foot? Is it 2,000 square foot? There is no... There is no minimum. Oh, okay.
Or maximum?
No. The minimum, no, not for... Not for building a home.
Okay. Sorry, I thought you were talking about square foot of the home.
No. Okay. So, for instance, if we allow this, then they sell it two years from now due to whatever unforeseen circumstance. Somebody comes in and puts up a couple of 600-foot tiny homes right behind that as an accessory building, kind of gets into the apartment-type thing, then we're even denser. So what does that do for our, you know, our sewer, septic issues, our water issues, fire issues, et cetera? That is our biggest concern. Number one, it changes the whole neighborhood that we bought into with the understanding that it was gonna stay that way, because we, like most people, when you move into an area, you read what the covenants are, restrictions, that type of thing. And we came from Montana where it was 40 acres and you could do whatever you want. And in 10 years, we saw what people can do to an area. And that's one of the reasons why we moved, was just to get out of that situation. So, again, nothing against these folks, but if we do it for one, we're gonna do it for whoever else. Someone gets in a bind financially, needs an extra couple hundred thousand dollars, splits the lot, and who knows what goes in? I understand they have to meet minimum requirements, but, again, it's just the whole infrastructure. You know, you've got, instead of one household of, you know, four, eight, 10 people, now you've got two households on the same lot. Again, you're affecting the septic, the water, you know, fire, et cetera. So Linda and I would be against it. So... And those are the reasons why. Okay. And then as far as the others, the outbuildings, no problem with the accessory buildings being closer, as long as they meet the 100, you know, square foot minimum. And we would be against the short-term rentals on the apartments for the same reason. Again, it's, you know, okay, I wanna put a building in here and all of a sudden there's, you know, six or eight more people on...
And cars.
And cars, traffic, safety of our children, et cetera. So... Okay. So, thank you for your time. Appreciate it. Linda, is there anything you wanna add?
Oh, I don't think... Oh, I'll just a second. Sorry.
Oh, Lord.
No.
You've got a separate voice here.
I do. And I'm Linda Hamrock. And Mark really spoke for both of us and said everything. And the biggest concern I have is, and he stated it as well, but first of all, it sets a precedent. And we all know if somebody comes in and says, "Well, she did it for them," you know, it's hard to argue that, you know, in a corridor anywhere else. And the other thing is, like he said, we bought it because of the... Just how beautiful it is up there and how different it is up there. And when you're driving down Woodland Hills and you see these houses just stacking up on top of each other, for me, that's... I don't wanna see that happen. And again, you know, super-nice people, you know, I mean, nothing against anybody, but that neighborhood is so unique. To see that happen would be, you know, unfortunate. There's always a fair bit... Already a fair bit of traffic up there, so we're talking, you know, people are gonna start wanting to do that, you know? Hey, like he said, you know, I could sell off this piece and make a couple hundred thousand and put my kids through college, you know? Easy fix. So, anyway, that's all I have to say, but...
Okay. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Rod Mun, and I think I can speak for my wife, Mary. The... I'll get to the end first. I would be opposed to the recommendation.
We're talking about the zoning change.
Zoning, yes, yes. Mary and I bought the property approximately 10 years ago, and we moved in about seven years ago. And we bought it for the purpose that currently exists. We like the area. It meets all of our aesthetic goals, and the two-acre pots were ideal. The area is serene, it's beautiful. And so I don't want to feel like I was baited and switched. I bought the property for a reason, the reason that currently exists. With regard to what could happen in the future, I'm not good at making decisions on could-be's and may-b's and ought-to-be's, et cetera. And I am good in making decisions on what is. And what is, is an area that we like and want to remain. So, to that extent, I would be opposed to the change. With regard to temporary housing, I can tell you, I'm ex-alien enforcement, and I can tell you that as you increase transient population, you increase crime. It is statistically factual, and the area has a very good quality of life. You increase transient population, you will destroy that quality of life. And so, in either case, no one has spoken of impact statements, evaluations, assessments with regard to the impact of the decisions that we're debating, or at least discussing. So I think that from the standpoint of trying to make a decision like that, somebody, somewhere, needs to get in the books, do the homework, and identify the what-ifs and yeah-buts as it relates to these types of issues. So it's not, and shouldn't be, a Mark Five-Eyeball System decision. There is data that exists that speak to the implications of the kinds of changes that we're talking about. That data should be presented along with any of the recommendations that I think we're discussing.
Okay. Thank you. Linda, speak now or forever hold your peace?
We mean Mary.
Mary, I'm sorry, yes. Linda, we've already heard from Linda.
Well, I am in agreement with my husband and my neighbors that, first of all, I am opposed to the idea of making the changes that are being discussed. And we are... My husband and I searched and searched for property for several years before we landed in Woodland Hills. And Woodland Hills really met all the requirements that we had in our minds: mountainous, serene, treed, peaceful, natural. And I'm afraid that making the change that's being discussed in the zoning would negatively impact those things that were so important to us when we first decided to move to Woodland Hills. So I am opposed. And again, I don't have anything against you or your family. So that's where I stand with it.
Okay. Thank you. Have we heard from everybody?
Can we have just one more second? Because I can't take more time.
Sure.
Well, mostly, I just wanted to say, I think you did a good job on the ADU thing and the shed thing. But also, we do wanna be really careful because the county and the state are really, really pushing on septic. And we wanna be super careful that we don't do anything to draw any attention or make anybody fuss, because they could come in easily and require us to put our whole city on sewer. And that would be crippling to the old, already-developed part of the city. And so I just think we have to be super careful if we make any lots smaller up in the developed area, because somebody down the same way could come up and start fussing, and we could have ourselves a big problem. Anyway.
Okay. Thank you.
So is that also with respect to the pensions, etc.?
No, because you have... Because they would have to get approval from the county to put in, to have enough that they can... I don't know that that would be as big a concern, but if we start to, in R-119, R-119 zone up there, that could be a real problem.
So, Rick, do you agree with your wife? No, I'm just kidding.
And I would like to make another quick comment, but mostly just other things regarding the, I guess it was number two, that... So you've got the... You wanna change the... You wanna add a detached accessory apartment, which is different from your accessory dwelling unit. It's my understanding we don't even allow that at this point, right?
Correct.
But...
What?
Accessory dwelling apartment in our main home.
No, no, yes, we do.
We do now? Okay.
Yes. And ADU.
Okay. Just we need to make sure we're...
Right, talking about the same thing. An apartment for rent inside your current home.
We call that an accessory dwelling unit.
Or apartment?
No.
No, unit? Okay. Because I thought an accessory dwelling unit was an additional little...
It's within the home.
Okay. And we allow that now?
Yes.
Well, and we have to because of state law that was passed.
Okay. So that's kinda current?
And the same thing.
That's recent? Okay. Because I did wanna say I approve that, but if it's already passed, but not the separate apartment?
Well, that one, the state reforms as well. Now...
A separate apartment? Oh. Well, then why are we voting?
We can put restrictions on it. And that's what we're wanting to do. That's what, wanting to know if there's interest in accessory apartment, then we need to keep these restrictions in mind so we don't restrict it out of the possibility.
I see.
But yet, allow it. It's allowed under state statute. It's not required.
I see. Okay. And so you want input from the citizens as to whether or not we approve of it and what the...
In concept, yes.
Okay. Okay. Well, is this the only time you're ever gonna put this to the city council, or will it come up again?
Who knows what the future holds?
Yeah, yeah. What did you say, Severn? What'd you say?
Just depends on what they do.
Yeah, yeah. Okay. And the last thing about the little accessory storage unit or something, I also approve of.
Okay.
We try to do things like that that in our minds are common sense. It doesn't seem to pass the common sense bar, and we are pretty tough on that usually.
Any other comments that haven't been made? Anybody would like to make at this time?
Just one question.
Okay.
On that, the effect on the sewer system question, or, you know, forcing that, does that extra load, what does that do as far as septic? When we, you know, if we have two homes in there or the accessory units, does that just have to be approved through the tests or things like that?
In part. There's concern in the county regarding our water sources and the protection of them. There's a thought that it's getting more challenging to have septic systems and have good source drinking water. There have been no issues saying can't do that yet. The position that the city has taken is, in the older parts of the city where we don't have septic, we... Excuse me, don't have sewer, we continue to allow septic. But we don't control that, the county. The county health controls that and identifies the kind of system that is required. In some instances, due to the makeup of the topography and the ground, some people have had to put alternative septic systems in, for $240,000, $50,000, which basically is a self-contained septic system for them, taking it a step further than what we currently have. But in the areas of the city that we have dry sewer or sewer is there available, we require them to hook into sewer and not have their own septic system.
And is part of that because of the density of the homes?
Not necessarily at this stage, but it could get to that where the county says, "We're not going to allow any more septic systems in the city. You're gonna have to lay sewer and tie into sewer everywhere in the city." That... We're a ways from that, and that's been alluded to a little bit, but there have been no discussions to put us on the edge of that happening.
Yeah, it was alluded to when we were building it, Mike and Kevin, so I just wasn't sure what, you know?
And so Thousand Oaks has septic. You bet, no, not septic, sewer.
Sewer.
Thousand Oaks has sewer and Thunder Creek on the same...
Correct. Four Seasons also.
And Four Seasons.
Yes.
And part of Woodland Hills and its adjacent areas where it's accessible...
Some of Thousand Oaks is getting sewer now that hasn't been put in before, where the infrastructure has not been done. That's going... That will be sewer, that won't be septic there.
But some of them will be all septic.
Yes.
And that becomes a good thing because that kinda relieves a little of the pressure from the county to want us to put sewer out there.
It does. It does. So where we have sewer, we require sewer hookup. So... We wanna thank everybody for being here tonight and for your comments. You're welcome to stay around.
Wayne? Wayne, can I say something really quick?
Sure, Brian.
So when it comes to the short-term rentals, on our last council meeting, I pushed really hard for this to come back to the planning commission to talk about, to study more. I just wanna point out, because you got more people there than we ever get at city council meetings, that one of the things that we looked at is this is actually a... Could be a revenue source for the city. It's one of the things that we struggle with and one of the things we talked about during our campaigns and everything else. I am not personally for it as a citizen, as a resident of Woodland Hills. I'm willing to pay more in taxes to keep our way of life. And so that's my personal opinion as a resident, but as a city council member, I asked to have this looked at because it is a possible revenue source for the city, and it's already happening now. We know that it's happening, and people are Airbnb-ing their houses out. And it's a way that we can capture revenue. So it's one of those things to think about, and what kind of people would actually be coming to Woodland Hills to rent an Airbnb, those kind of things. And Olympics are coming, and we've got, you know, dark skies committees looking at that, and that's a possibility that people might come to Woodland Hills, and we could actually gain something from it. Again, my personal opinion, I don't wanna do short-term rentals. I don't wanna have a party house next to me. But as a city council member, I felt that it was important for everybody to research and really look at this in depth. And I don't know that we need to make a quick decision... And I don't know that we need to make a quick decision on anything.
Okay, thank you, thank you. We will now, it's, uh, 8:15. We will go into our regular planning commission meeting. We'll call it to order. Simon, could we ask you to offer an invocation?
Sure.
And after that, Larry, could you offer, or lead us in the pledge of allegiance?
Heavenly Father, we're grateful for you to gather here tonight to discuss matters of the city. We're grateful for this to be the place we live in and for moderate community, we're part of the task. I bless upon this meeting, we're all be productive and understanding. Be able to cover these issues properly. We seem to pray and enable this, I mean, this Christ.
Amen. Could stand and join us in pledge of allegiance?
If you would, please stand for the pledge of allegiance. Follow me.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Uh, next item on the agenda is number nine, is approval of the, of last month- I'm sorry.
You've got a public comment.
Oh, thank you. Is there any, anybody who's interested in making further public comment? Not only about the things we've talked about tonight, but about anything. Uh, we'll give you a couple of minutes to do that if, if you choose to. Anybody online? I don't see anybody else, so. Very good. Thanks, Severn. We'll go into the business and discussion. Item nine is approval of the April 17, 2024 Planning Commission minutes. There's a couple of corrections I made to it and sent them out to you-
Right.
Probably yesterday on it, so, uh, if there's any, no further question, I'll take a, a motion on that.
I'll make a motion that we approve the minutes of the April 2024 Planning Commission.
Okay, thank you. Second, second. Larry, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Next item is discussion, recommendation to city council for the change in zoning from R1-2 to R1-19 for 50 East Broad Hollow. So, open it up for Planning Commission thoughts, discussion. You've heard comments here tonight. You likely have your own views, and that's fine too. But, um, let's, let's have a discussion of your thoughts on it.
Hey, Wayne, could I introduce this to the council?
I don't think we need that.
The zoning map?
The zoning map, yeah. I think we're familiar enough with, with it in there.
I was just, the part was just-
You can, you can leave it here if you'd like.
This is that whole section. Those are all one-acre lots except for Gibbs. The rest of those are one acres, and then everything on the other side of Broad Hollow is all one acre pieces.
I think Larry and I were just looking at the county parcel map there. And the lots that are closest to the one in request from 50th Hall, or as he said, are all one acre lots right now. It's only those that, oh, up the hill that are less, that are more than one acre lots. So they really are same size lots essentially. They're not R1-19s. They're probably R1-1s.
That is correct.
And I think, well, that may have gotten changed because it's zoned to R1-2. But one acre lots can be in a R1-2 zone.
Well, we've got Thousand Oaks, this is R1-2 PUD, which are three-quarter acre lots. All of, virtually all of Thousand Oaks, and, and smaller even.
Yes, yeah.
Other thoughts?
The same thing. So is it a, is it a frontage issue? Is that why he's needing to rezone? Because the R1-2s one acre lots, right?
No, it's true.
The one ones.
They can be one acre, but it's zoned two acre and under.
Actually, actually, most of those are not actually two acres. They're 1.7 to 2. Because when they take out the roads or reasons or things like that, they're not actually two acres.
And then just as far as the precedent, you know, and I think it was brought up already, but if there's a home right in the middle of a lot, I mean, they have to cut their house in half or demolish it to do, to do a rezone. Um, I just had some thoughts, you know, Mr. Flannery's saying, well, we'd do the 50-foot setback. We'd have to probably change the zone in order to, to say, well, he has to once it's rezoned. But I have heard of something like this expiring after a certain amount of time. So Flannery's are saying, well, we're going to build on this. We want to build on it in 12 months. And then perhaps you could say, well, we'll rezone it based off of you building on it. You agree to do a 50-foot setback. If you don't start building within, or at least get a building permit within X months, then the thing expires and it goes back to an R1-2. I've seen something like that happen before. You know, I don't know that you can, we'd have to probably change the zone in order to say, well, if, once it's rezoned, you're going to have to do a 50-foot front setback. Does that make sense? But I have heard of them expiring. And you say, well, you didn't do anything with it. The whole thing just goes by the wayside and it's back to what it was.
I haven't heard of that before, but I, I could see it happening.
Just that was some concern, hey, what if they don't build on it? Or what if he, what if he just sells it right after it's rezoned? You know, that would, that would negate kind of the deal. So I think maybe something like that could be looked at.
Is, is there, um, any rationale as to why we went R1-19 as opposed to R1-1?
The setbacks are, are-
They're not, they're too great to divide that in half? The side setbacks. The front's not a problem. The rear's not a problem.
The width, the width of the lot is. An R1-1, the minimum lot width is 150 feet.
Okay.
So if you divides this 200-foot lot into two sections, which are then 100-foot in width, that complies with the R1-19 zone. But it doesn't comply with the R1-1 zone. So.
Okay, I, I am thinking that if you had a home in front and a home in back, it wouldn't look crowded to the neighbors. But you still have to have the frontage. And so I'm wondering if you could be maybe creative on dividing the lot rather than straight down the middle. If you could have the, it start in the middle, then curve and curve so that you, well, so-
You've got a flag lot.
Yeah, I think it's true.
You can't do that. Does it need to have 100 straight back the entire way?
Yeah.
Yeah. I mean, the flag lot, yeah, is basically, you know, keeping us a driveway down the side, and then it opens up. And so that other houses is back in the back, would never be seen from the front.
What's the difference between that and accessory apartment?
The accessory apartment has to abide by the same setbacks that that zone has. So many lots won't accommodate accessory apartment.
And it's altogether as one, under one owner?
Right now it is, but the new, the new one you're looking at is, could be a separate, doesn't have to be attached to the house.
It'd be a separate, it's still one owner. It's the same parcel, you know.
Right, right. I guess what I'm asking, and sorry, I realize this is your meeting now, but, um, isn't that essentially the fire danger is why we don't do flag lots? And isn't that what, if you had an apartment behind your home, isn't that the same problem with fire? You know, inaccessibility for a fire truck or something? Why don't we do unflagged lots?
So the reason-
Because our, what?
Well, there, it, yes, that is a concern we've talked about quite a bit. They are required to have a separate parking stall and have access with the vehicle, which should accommodate fighting a fire. One thing we haven't talked about much is if those buildings need to be sprinkled.
Oh, sure.
Yeah, it's written in your proposal. Okay.
And would it, would it be a shared driveway?
It can be a shared driveway, but it has to have a separate parking stall.
Sure.
Now, there's standards for our driveways also that are in our code. And there's a standard for a frontage that a, a lot has to have at least 70-foot frontage. In R1-19, there are smaller driveway setbacks, but there are setbacks for driveways in the R1-19, which are different than the R1 or R2 zones. They're, they're, well, they're larger for those. They're smaller for the R1-19.
So let me answer your question on that too, is yes, you could, you could do the one house at 50 feet, and you could do the other house at 75. You could do two different setbacks without doing a flag lot. Just put one house deeper than the other, you know, type of, you know, you could do that. Again, the asterisks that you can put in place for that to happen, kind of like what you're talking about, is if it's not done within this set amount of time, then it would expire. And then if somebody wanted to come in and do that later, they'd have to start the whole process over again. And, and the precedent part really comes down to, to you as the, as the planning commission of the council, is, the reason again I looked at this is because it is, everything around it is one acres. Everything on the other side is one acre, and even less, less than one acres right next to me, you know, and that. And so if anybody wants to come in later and do R19 for the rest of it or whatever, they're going to have to, one, as an empty lot, you have a frontage, you know. And then you still have the decision-making to say, no, we did this one here because it's surrounded by one acres. These are all two acres all the way up and everything else. So that's, you can come to the same decision, you know, or opposite of what you do here because of that and, and other reasons as far as that.
Well, and, and from my perception, and I haven't seen exactly where your current house is on the lot. Yours must be to one side of the lot.
Well, our house right now, there's no, there's no houses on that lot right now.
There's no houses at all.
You've been referring to your current home, but you need to untie it.
Yeah, my current home in, in Highland is, I got a home on it, but no, that, the lot we're talking about, no, there's no homes on that, on that, so.
And see, that, that then also mitigates against everything going up on that side of Broad Hollow. All those that already have lots on them, it would be impossible for them to do-
Homes on them, you said.
You said lots on them.
You meant houses on them.
On the lot. You said lots on the lot.
We, we all agree with that, yeah. Let's continue.
All those lots that have huts, huts on them currently could not be subdivided. Because there is no way they're going to need, with R1-19.
Well, some of those house, some of those houses up there that are on R2, a half to acre, could theoretically come in and rezone to R1-19 and have that room because of where that's all located.
And then there's homes on, homes that are in settlement and pine, and lots, right, there's empty lots that could then be-
Well, they're all currently one acre. And again, they, they have the ability to make that decision when that comes. Somebody else ought to bring that to them and say, we want to.
And, and, you know, talking about, it's impressive, but it doesn't mean that has to, that has to happen.
It's just more likely. Well, yeah, but that's, that's the same thing as saying, it's more likely that, uh, everything, I've watched 32 years of Highland change. And, you know, you're, as much as I was opposed to, to that, and it was, you know, it eventually was, you know, I, it, it ends up being what it is. You come up, we had 32 years of it, you know, we liked it up here for the same reason that you guys do, so.
To get away from Highland.
I want to get, but again, it's, it's going back to, you know, like Wayne was saying, it's tomorrow and down the road, you know, other decisions that will be made. You know, everywhere else right now, mostly, I was, I can't say everywhere else, R1, if it's an R1 acre, there, 100 feet is the, is the frontage on that versus 150. And I understand the reasoning up here. But again, like I say, you know, for, we're surrounded by one acre lots across the street and then across the other. And it would have to be a whole nother, you know, meeting, and, and, you know, they'd have to bring their, you know, to do that. And I think, I think to, uh, his comment, it's, they're already got homes on them, you know, what you got to do is you got to, so I, we're dealing with what we have to do, so.
One acre lot, you know, one acre lot. And, and I supported smaller lots on the other side of my house, so I'm not opposed to just everything being smaller. But that's not the neighborhood for it. It will change that neighborhood.
Well, that's where, I'm not talking about all the way up. We're talking about this, the one which is already like 20.
Which is a huge place where a lot of traffic goes past and is going to change the look. It's going to make it feel very different. Anyway.
Yeah, thank you.
Here's one concern.
Do you plan on building, are you going to propose these homes be built at the same time? Is this something that you're, or is this going to be, what are the timeframes? Yes, it would be, they would be within a year if not the same time.
Yes, here's a couple of concerns I have. Uh, and as has been expressed by those who are, who are here tonight, some of them, is they, they've acquired their home, their property in their home, or built their home on property where they made some valid assumptions at the time that this is the way this street's going to be. And we're talking more about the size than the setbacks. I think here in our, in the city, setbacks are a critical thing. And that's why they're different for, for the different zones that we have to try to accommodate the various types of setbacks. And a R1-19 has decidedly different setbacks than does the R-1 or the R-2. People like that space. It's, it's, it's more than just the size of, of the lot that I think I, I consider. I think the setbacks are, are an important part of why a person buys a particular lot. You've seen the lots down in Summit Creek, they're R1-19, and they're relative, the homes are relatively close together. They don't have a lot of the trees that, that we, the other part of the city has. And that's the environment that they want. They, that's why they're spending four, five, six, $700,000 for a lot. They don't mind being close to a neighbor or on top of them in some instances, et cetera. But the, the people that have bought property along Broad Hollow in years past anticipated having the setbacks that, that an R1-2 or an R1-1 has with them. And that concerns me a little bit as we go in and, and look to change. And I think that the change that has been expressed by a few, that's one of the significant changes, is the setbacks. So I give, in my view, I give a lot of, um, I guess maybe deference in, in the setback issue for, for the lots that are there. People who have been there for a long, long time, bought those homes and those lots with, with that expectation. Now, nobody said, and I'm not looking for further comments to be made, if, if they knew that there was a, a, a lot, two lots there with R1-19, would that have kept them from buying the home and the lot that they bought? I don't know. Maybe for some it would. Particularly those, maybe neighbors on, on each side of those two lots. So that's, we've talked about maybe best-case scenarios tonight with what Mr. Flannery's planning on doing. But I think we should consider, think about anyway, worst-case scenarios. And it's been touched on a little bit. If, uh, if those two lots are changed to R1-19, there's no- there's no, we, we know what Mr. Flannery plans on doing, but if there should be a reverse, for whatever reason, of his plans, then his plans are out the window. And those lots are gonna be sold to maybe family members who have a different idea than he has as to what they're going to be. So I'm just saying, we need to consider some worst case scenarios too, as, as we look at this. I know there's some best case scenarios, and maybe as you look at the best case scenarios, everything looks good. There's fewer reasons maybe to, to question, but if you look at some of the worst case scenarios that could happen, then maybe that will taint those best case scenarios a little bit. But I think need to give some, a little bit of, I do, I need to give credits to a little bit of the worst case things that, that could happen, and, uh, we've got one individual that, that has made their request to the city, as he's required to do. We've got quite a few people who have expressed views against that, not because of any dislike of, of Mr. Flannery, but because they have property there, they live there, and they're here expressing the concerns that they have with, with taking that step and changing the zone of that area. So those are, those are just some thoughts that I've had, um, in, in looking at, and I think it's talked about a precedent, and I think that does take on some, some life if, if we're allowing it here. If somebody wants to buy the, the praise lot up there and divide it into two, would be hard pressed to say no, because we've already, we've done it once, and right or wrong, but it, it, it says something that we're not objecting to, um, another lot being divided the same way, uh, if we are, if we aren't. But I think we need to calculate that into our, into our decision as well.
Can I bring something else up?
Please.
Lynn, um, I'm trying to look on the county map and see, but my understanding, Lynn, something else, so does it show the zoning on these ones?
No.
That's what I was looking for, but it's a, it's R one one, or R one, right, on those smaller ones, next to him, the one acres, where everything else, R one, it does kind of get a little bit sticky when you make a little island of a zone. You know, I think if he had the ability to go to the R one, um, then that would kind of make sense because they're there, right? But it does kind of get a little bit messy if you have a, you know, just make an island of a, of a zone, right? If it's next to something similar to, to like an annexation, you know, your neighbor's gotta, you've gotta be neighbors to someone in the city, the zoning can kind of be that way. And then we really kind of would open that up, I think, the same, well, he's already there. So I think it makes sense if someone's like, well, I've got a six acre lot, I wanna go to an R two, or I've got this one, it's, it's a candidate for an R one, but having the island of another zone does get a little bit messy, and then it could, that could end up being an, an issue for us down the road with, who knows what, I mean, they're just all, put a commercial there, you know?
No, he, he can't do an R one because there's not wide enough.
Yeah, and that's what I'm seeing here, you said it's a hundred and fifty, so I'm like, if there's nobody else nearby that's in the R one nine, it does get a little bit messy to have a.
Well, there, there are two lots off of Willen Hills Drive, and there is no way that there are ones.
Are those two, those two little ones there? That's what I was looking at, because their frontage is.
Not, not the ones on the end, not the ones right next.
Just up, it's just up.
The ones that are on Willen Hills Drive beyond.
Right above a hundred feet.
And I don't know the history of that, those could have been rezoned twenty years ago.
Yeah.
I don't know.
That's what it looks like. Looks like that lot was divided right down the middle.
Here, I'll get that.
Yeah.
You got Coates, Coates and Gibbs. It's on Willen Hills, so you've got, what is it, Pachner on the corner?
Right.
And then you go up past into the Coates and then Gibbs.
Coates backs right onto this, this lot.
Yeah.
And those are.
Yeah, but Gibbs is next to their large lot.
They've actually combined, notice the serial numbers are the same.
Yeah, you'll notice those numbers are the same, so that's actually one huge lot for the Gibbs.
But the Coates, a hundred and five feet, they've got a hundred and five foot frontage.
This one here.
I did see Gibbs, Gibbs and Gibbs, there's the two Gibbs.
But you'll notice they are, they have the same number.
Oh, does.
Why, why does it show that split?
Because originally they were, were different lots, but Gibbs bought all of them and combined them into one.
You're talking about these two, right? Not this one.
Right.
The Coates is a separate lot.
And for what it's worth, to me, I think the Coates house looks so weird because it's turned sideways on the frontage.
Yeah.
And you can't tell what's the front of that, other than that's a different, a hundred and fifty.
Yeah, no, that would, that, that did not have to be held that way. We looked at that house and buy.
Have you thought about building a bell shaped home? There's two different ways, you know, one has the front door and the other.
Well, the thing is, is it's like, it's semantic, it's like, if I build something, you know, it looks like two homes versus two, or build something that's large, you know, that covers that, you know, versus you have two homes, and when I say small, you're like, say, yours is two thousand square feet, I mean, it's, it's a nice home. And so, you know, if you put two homes on there, that may, you know, art may not span this way, it may have to span a little more this way, but it should be, but what I'm saying is it's, it's not gonna, my personal opinion, and everybody's, you know, I appreciate your opinions of that, is, you know, it's not gonna change. Look, as you come in that or drive up that, maybe you've got houses that are right up the front, and it's just like you see all the small houses, I mean, uh, the one right next to us is not even, not even acre, and one on the corner is not even acre, but they just happen to be wider, and so, but they're, but they're less than acre. Everything on the other side of me across the street is all one acre pieces, but they are just a wider, which goes to your comment about the setbacks, but also there's still, there's still one acre or less than one acres. And so again, and what we're dealing here, and I understand what you're saying, is we're doing R nineteen, yeah, I wish we could do an R one one, that would make more sense, but a hundred and fifty, that's where we get into that, that issue. So again, given the fact that we would do fifty foot setbacks, so nothing's close to the road, it's gonna be bad, probably would be further than fifty, because the way that I'd like that lot, you know, would set it back further. But anyway, again, going back to your question, what's the worst case scenario? What can we do as a planning commissioner that says, okay, worst case scenario, Flannery's, you know, six minutes after, after we do the zoning, now they go to somebody else, somebody else buys them, or, you know, they pass, whatever happens, ends up, you know, what do they legally, can they do? They can't put more than two houses on there. Nobody's gonna come in and build a small little house because, you know, the lots are gonna sell for three hundred and fifty thousand or whatever, I mean, look at all the lots that are, you know, the prices are crazy. So, you know, whoever buys them is gonna, you know, put a nice house on there, you've got, it's not gonna go small, you're gonna go with a set of, it's just a fire danger, you're actually gonna probably be better with fire danger because two homes versus all of those trees that are replacing the home, and then you've gotta have how much space, trees will be from your house that are required, it would, you know, fire suppression, you're actually gonna probably have less than a fire hazard and fire issue with two homes there than you would, uh, one.
You, you may be, but then that creates a secondary unintended consequence of fewer trees between the homes, and now, now you've got that open space, which people have moved here to, to surround themselves with trees, as, as long as there's a certain distance away from the home.
Sure.
So there's a good and a bad.
Oh, yeah, absolutely.
With that, and so, those kinds of things, I think, need to be weighed in the balance as, as we look at it and as obviously the council looks at it, uh, too.
I just was looking over Von Hollow on the map, and it looks to me that there are only four lots left on Von Hollow that don't have a home on them, and this being one of them. So there are only three other lots on all of Von Hollow up to Skylight that could conceivably be subdivided. So I'm not sure that that changes the neighborhood, even the possibility of changing the neighborhood that much unless people came in and tore down what was already there.
We've heard from neighbors tonight who for, have their own reasons for having purchased the lots and the, or the, and/or the homes that they're, that they have, and, and they did it for, for a reason. Now, potentially, we're looking to upset that reason with one, with one lot. So that, that concerns me, that's, as many times as we've been through, that I've been through, these rezoning, that's, I, I tend to give a lot of deference to the people who already have the lot and homes in place there. And sometimes they may feel that their fears are unfounded, or their concerns are unfounded, but I don't necessarily think that, I, with the comments that have been made tonight by, by those who have, who have come to express their views on it. So, again, that's, that's kind of where I'm coming from, I, nobody else may agree with me, and, and that's fine, but again, just expressing that, that view. So, open to other discussions from us if there's something that.
Well, as, as I stated, um, the concern is, that has been expressed, is that it would change the nature of the neighborhood. It is on the furthest part of that neighborhood that might be changed on one end, does not affect everything else beyond those first, would then be four lots, all the way up the rest of the way. And there are only three other lots that conceivably could be subdivided as it currently stands in the R one nineteen.
Yeah, my concern isn't, I think that you've addressed the concerns of it, the impact of how it's going to look. I don't think it will really change from looking at this plot and things, that. I think the thing that concerns me is the R one nineteen island like Simon has brought up. I think that could be a concern for us in a more near future than anything else. That would be my only concern. Rest of it, I think that you've addressed very well, and I don't know if it really would change, look at that screen that much.
I think there, there, the three of those two lots is the one is Gibbs on the corner, which is already part of those one acre lots down there at that end, at the south end.
That's true. That is a zoning map that you've got there.
Yeah. Yep.
I think that where he has two acres, it, it would be reasonable to split it, but I don't feel that we should change the zoning, and if that makes it unbuildable, then I think the zoning has to stay the same because we're imposing on the neighbors that are right there.
That's what I'm saying too, I think it's the same thing. I just think it could be a can of worms changing.
They, they bought that lot with those setbacks and the expectation it would stay the same, and if he could split it and keep the setbacks where they are, great, but if not, I think it.
Well, that's not possible.
Yeah, it's not possible.
A side setback, if one setback, one setback is possible, a side setback, yeah.
I think there is the option of one lot, a home, and a detached accessory building.
Well, if that ordinance gets passed.
Two.
Long skinny lots are hard to go down, they just aren't.
Uh, keep in mind, our vote is a recommendation.
Yeah.
Yeah.
The city council, the ones that are going to be deciding people on it whether there's one or all of us, for or against, it doesn't make any difference, the council are going to have their own, own thoughts on it, and, and that's fine, that's, that's the way our government works, so.
It doesn't make any difference, they want your good recommendation, so thank you for doing this work.
It's, it might make it easier for them, but where some of them may have some rather definite ideas about things, they.
I mean, this would not be the first time, but the recommendation has gone off and been thrown completely out.
Like, right back.
Yeah.
But we appreciate your work and they do.
And then we come back to Ken, we can add it later.
I've said since.
I don't like.
Yeah, we've been there. I'm sorry?
You ever seen Chatters?
No, not yet.
I, I feel, well, indecisive, but I, I do not like the idea of changing that to R one, and there's nothing else you could change it to. Because even though smaller lots are still zoned, R one two, because they, they met the criteria, I guess, either for width or, or something to, to be, they can't for the life if we see why that one narrow, narrow lot remained R one two, because it, I can't even see if.
Yeah, but it makes.
It doesn't make sense.
But that's not a reason to change.
Someone's friend.
It's not, it would be.
Okay. Well, across the street, those are all. They're, I, they're not R one nineteen because that hasn't been around that long.
They're R one ones.
Yeah, R one ones.
Are we ready to take a vote? Or we, we need more discussion?
I think Laurie wants to make that motion. Laurie, make, make a motion.
To deny it?
I'll take a motion either way, I mean, well, we may go through this a couple of times, but, um.
Okay, I will make a recommendation to the city council.
Motion.
I'll make a motion, um, to not change the zoning from R one two to R one nineteen for property located at fifty East Von Hollow.
Okay.
I'll second that.
Okay, all in favor of that motion?
Aye.
Aye. Who is opposed?
Aye.
Okay. So we've got one, two, three, four in favor of it, and one not in favor of it. So that percentage will go to the city council, uh, with, with our recommendation that, a four to one recommendation that it not be rezoned R one nineteen. Mr. Flannery, we appreciate you being here.
Well, thank you very much.
And, uh, I just should say that, uh, there's still light on with the city council, so and truthfully, I have no idea what they will, what they will do.
No, I appreciate that, and, and I understand, I understand the feelings and the intentions, I mean, we've always been there, we've had, the only thing that I disagree with that is just that, you know, we talked about the neighborhood, most everybody around there here, they're one acre lots, they're much, um, setbacks, there's a side setback, you know, the frontage is thirty feet, but, uh, but, you know, the ordinance right now, that zone is a hundred and fifty feet for, for the R one one, I think it's, it's not bad, but there's, you know, it's, it's. zone is a hundred fifty feet for the R-11, I think it's not that, but there's... I understand, I appreciate your time, or anything. Do I have to agree with it? No, that's the process.
Well, it's worth, we have kids that are trying to do that, and they want to be there and...
Well, that's, again, that's the thing is, they also don't have to give them the money when they have the property. There's, that's a whole different scenario, but it's just going back to your accessory apartments and all that, is that affordable housing, you know, didn't mean anything to me so much, but I remember when you were really young, it takes a while to be ordered, but the state sees that. As two parcels, you've got two property taxes. You know, if you do an accessory apartment on it, which basically you end up with the same thing, or even one that's attached to the house, you know, you know the big enough, and if we could lie, you're gonna do the same thing, but you know, here, you're going to pay the property tax, and then go, now, to sell that, or to be, you know, as it become that, and to get it to your own rate, it's like, we don't need that big place. So that's the one thing that I, that I gain in understanding is, is the need for that, but also to keep the feeling that we have of why we came up here. So I was hoping this was a good balance for that, but anyway, appreciate your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You're all welcome to stay or go, or whatever. We've got some more business to do, so, you know...
I am curious about these other things, but I guess we'll...
Okay. There you go. Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, everybody, for your time.
Thank you, thanks.
The next item on the agenda is number 11, Discussion and Recommendation to City Council on Proposed Ordinants, having to do with detached accessory apartments. If there's, if you have reservations about any of the items in the accessory apartment ordinance, we can certainly consider some modifications to those. Again, city, let's just say, for example, we approve the ordinance for accessory apartments, and may go to the city council. City council may say, well, we're good with it, except we don't like this one thing. So that's gonna get stricken, or what about you overlook this? Well, then maybe that's gonna get added, so...
Which happens every time we look at it.
A lot, yeah. And that's fine. So, anyway, any thoughts on the detached accessory apartments? The big, the, the, the big thing that I see is, this allows, unlike the accessory dwelling unit or a separate standalone facility, somebody can take a detached garage, if they want, and make an accessory apartment out of it. They can't use it as an accessory dwelling unit because it doesn't meet the criteria to have a common wall with the residents, so, and somebody may want to build a separate apartment.
Does this mean someone could build a big apartment building?
No.
If they had parking?
No, it has to be on a single structure, single family resident lot with the home. The home has to be there. They can't come and put a big apartment complex on a residential lot.
Well, what if I built a big one in the back of my house? Could I do that?
Yes.
As long as you're living in the main house. You've gotta be living in the main house right now.
And can we put any restrictions?
In one of the two houses, not necessarily the main house. You could move into the accessory apartment.
Yeah.
You just have to be resident on the property.
On the property, yes.
That's true. Well, you were asking if there, there can't be multiple units, because that obviously wouldn't be approved.
Correct.
Because it wouldn't accommodate for the septic or for the sewer as well.
But I could put a twin...
I mean, as soon as you get a certain, a certain amount of bathrooms, everything changes.
We're allowing an apartment.
An apartment.
It could have two bathrooms, it could have two bedrooms, but...
But it would be for one, one separate...
One apartment.
Yeah.
So not apartments.
And so you can make the determination, as opposed to the fourth septic, is large enough to accommodate both. To accommodate both, those buildings.
Oh, I thought they had to be separate.
But we may have to expand the septic.
That'll be up to the county to make that determination of what kind of septic they're going to have to have. Or potentially sewer.
It truly limits.
I mean, if Thousand Oaks, they wanna, you know, have the, one of their homes are big homes, but they still have room on the lot for an apartment, they can do that, and it would like to be sewed, because their home is sewn.
If I put a second story on my shop as an apartment...
Yeah.
Then they would make the determination, and my septic better be cut out, the way they maybe built it.
Now, parking is gonna be another issue that's going to inhibit some, some of this, because parking has to be accommodated on an apartment.
If you're building on top of the three car garage, or...
Well, I, I had two cars that went with my home condition.
And they're, they're...
Scheme office.
They're required to have two cars, so they can't say, well, I'm gonna take one, one of those spaces, one of those two spaces for an apartment. No, you're required to have a two car garage, so... So they won't be proliferating all out the city, but there'll be some here and there that may want to be able to do that, particularly on the larger lots.
And they would have to meet all the setbacks that the existing home does.
They would have to meet the sewer, to a septic.
And they're, as I remember, an accessory apartment, that's a requirement of law, it only requires...
Or parking. Correct.
I'm just curious about the wording on here, E, this says that the parking cannot be in the front setback of a residence, isn't that where most driveways are?
You're enclosed parking. I mean...
They're basically saying, well, depending on what the setback is...
Fifty or thirty feet.
You can't say that that parking space is in the front thirty or fifty feet. It's gonna have to be beyond the footpath of the residence.
Behind it, or to the side of it, with meeting a setback.
So parking isn't in that setback, then? So a driveway wouldn't count?
No.
Correct. It still has to be, parking can't be in the, in the front setback.
And then there was another, I think, I don't know if this is just a, on the other one, the attached, but this, number thirteen, says any access to a second story accessory apartment must be in the stairway within the accessory apartment structure. That kind of makes it sound like an attached, from the old one, wouldn't be the detached, or is it, is this just if we were to put it in a detached garage, like you were saying?
And the stairway needs to be inside. The idea is, it needs to have the appearance of a single family resident, so...
So, for example, if I put the second story on my shop, it would have to have access to the second story inside the building. It could be an outside stairwell, but it may fit into the second floor.
Okay, that makes sense. So you wanted to add it to a building you already have?
Yes.
But it's a separate, a building separate from your home?
Right.
Okay.
Most of this has been taken from the state ordinance as well as Linden's ordinance. They have an ordinance allowing accessory apartments. So I looked at both of those in drafting this.
It was Linden and who else?
The state.
Oh, the state.
Yeah.
And then did we decide to stick with the point four or five acre feet of water?
That's on me, and that'll be up to the council, whether they want to add, keep that, or whether they want to do away with the new, with the water share altogether.
But your opinion is to...
My opinion is to have it half. There's no, there won't be any more outside watering, so that's generally where the, the point four or five inside and point four or five outside has come from, with our total of point nine oh acre feet for a home. So there's no additional outside watering, because it's on the same property, in fact, it may even be a little bit less.
Yeah.
So it'll be up to council whether they want to add that in as a requirement, or whether they want to do away with that. Right now, in accessory dwelling unit, we don't have a requirement for an additional water share. So they may feel, well, it's kind of the same thing, and let's, let's do away then with any additional water shares that, that somebody might need to acquire in order to have an apartment outside of the, of the home.
Well, maybe we need to look at doing water for the ADU.
Uh, that's possible. It shouldn't be discounted.
Because they will reduce an additional water, I mean...
Yeah.
Well, that's a assumption. If you had a small house, and then, and so you were using the point nine oh, and then all the kids left, and you changed it down below, probably not using any more water in that situation. Depending on... Yeah.
Yeah, so...
And again, I think this issue is coming from top down, pushing for more affordable housing.
It is, I think.
And it certainly wouldn't help, because if you get hammered, I mean, when they look at the population and...
Expensive property.
Property.
Yeah.
And water.
Well, it's kind of a, it's a bit of a, I don't say a compromise, but it's working towards that kind of more affordable housing. So, any other thoughts or comments to express on that?
I move that we recommend to the city council the detached accessory apartment ordinance.
I second that.
Okay, Larry, first motion, Severin, second motion. All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Okay, we'll make that recommendation to them. Item 12, Discussion and Recommendation to City Council on Proposed Ordinants, admitting City Code 10-11-2 on accessory buildings. That's one where we, we're saying that if it's ten, it's a hundred square feet or less, it does not have to meet the twenty foot away from the main structure requirement, and can be up against the home if they so choose.
As long as there is not water or electricity, right?
Yes, it's not a code, it's not a code issue.
Well, I think we've talked about it for several meetings.
Okay, any, any questions?
And I think there are a lot of them already in the city.
Yeah.
So it makes sense to go with the flow.
Okay, somebody want to make a motion on that?
I propose that we recommend to the city council adoption of proposed ordinance admitting City Code 10-11-2 accessory buildings.
Okay.
I'll second.
Second, Larry. All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Okay, thank you. Thirteen, Discussion and Recommendation to the City Council on Proposed Ordinants, admitting City Code 10-18, adopting a new code, 10-18-2, short term rentals. I'd remind us of the comment that Councilman Hutchings talked to us about tonight. I know there's some, not that, I'm not trying to influence your voting, I know there's some concern on the city council about the fact that short term rentals have, and there may be very well concern amongst ourselves as well, in that, and one of this, one of the requirements could be that the property owner has to be on the premise. In other words, if he wants to build, they want to build a short term rental and have it a, excuse me, an accessory apartment and have it a short term rental, that's fine, or if they want to take their ADU and make it a short term rental, that's fine. But the thought was that, and the idea is to reduce problems, is that the property owner has to be on site in order to have a short term rental, so that there's issues come up, there's a property owner there to take care of the problem. Now, that kind of negates a little bit, the short term rental, somebody, they only have a house on their property, and they're, want to short term rental it, and they don't have any place else to live, they're moving, and we've got that situation with our, with our home next to our house. It's not occupied, they have, I'm sure, rented it short term rental in the past, no consequence. But that could be a requirement that we put in there with, with either the accessory apartment, the ADU, or the home, one of those places, the property owner has to live in order to have a short term rental out of whatever unit they want to rent out. That's just a thought to throw out.
All right, so is the requirement in there right now?
I don't...
That was actually a question of mine, because number one here says the property owner must reside in one unit of property, so I was curious.
Okay, then that is, that is on there now.
And I was wondering, because it kind of sounded like, like renting the ADU, so it's basically the same provision as if you were gonna have an ADU on your property, you were gonna rent it out, you need to live in one or the other.
Yes.
It's the same thing.
For a short term.
Right, it's the same, same sort of thing, but we're going short term, right?
Yes.
But it also says that they can have a temporary absence from the property.
Well, and that's to take advantage or take consideration for most of us that have done our missions.
Usually, that's not a less than thirty day rental, so that would not apply for a year's rental or two years rental.
That, my question is, have we defined what is short term, is thirty days...
Yes, state law identifies that as thirty days or less.
So Mitchells used to put their home on Airbnb while they were living there, and
they would leave, and let people come in and have parties and events at their home, and they would be in hotels when they made enough money that was profitable, and then they were stopped.
Well, I, I agree with that. I mean, we'd have to maybe do some tweaking of the wording here, that, that owners, I mean, you know, they don't need to be...
Well, that's why you rent a house, so you can have a big party, and all these people have lots of rooms.
Right. Well, look at another, one of the standards for short term rentals, seasonal parties.
Give you an example.
Good luck.
Or modern law, right, the basement of a house in Provo with a swimming pool, where her whole family, grandma, grandpa, and all signs.
Everybody come.
You know, and, but they were living upstairs, but we had the whole basement and the swimming pool and, and everything, so it was a short term rental. It was only two or three, two or three days, that's all it was.
How do you say that's not a party, though?
You don't.
Yeah, I don't think we can enforce the party, say, oh, this is just our family, we're just playing a game.
Probably just be complaints, if someone complains and...
Yeah, you had noise, violations.
Who issues the five hundred dollar fine?
The city.
The ordinance enforcement officer.
Yeah.
Ted? Same as piles of dirt in the road, huh?
So now, you know, is it worth it? I mean, that's what we need to decide, is that, you know, if, if we've got an ADU, you've got an ADU next to a home over where you live, Simon, and the owners live in the ADU and rent their house out, are, are you comfortable with that? If they happen to leave for a couple of days and go to a hotel, so they're not faced with the noise and everything else, they might go along? I mean, those, you know, we, I don't think we can wish something on somebody else that we ourselves are not willing to, to endure, so to speak.
And aren't we forced to somehow accept this by the state?
No.
How can we get away?
The only requirement is, the state says you can't restrict an ADU by not allowing advertising for it. That's the, that was a sticky part of the state statute. That's the, that was a sticky part of the state statute. We can still put standards in here to make it very difficult if we choose to do that, or enough standards that, and there's some cities that don't allow, uh, short-term rentals.
How do they get away with not allowing them?
They're doing it anyway. I, this is, this is the deal of this, because I lived in Hurricane and in Sandhal for two years. And there wasn't any home down there allowed to do this, and more than half of them did it. So the reality is, I think it's good for the city to just know that these, this is happening. It's going to happen whether we want it to or not. I think it will happen.
Well, it is happening.
And it is happening. We have one on Eagle Nest, we've had weddings, we had a quinceañera or whatever.
Quinceañera?
Yeah, we have had some parties up on Eagle's Nest that have caused quite the ruckus in parking problems and everything else. If we had known those things were happening, maybe that would be easier to enforce. And also, maybe we can get some tax revenue.
Yes, there is a process to do that, similar to a hotel room tax, or whatever you want to call it, to get revenue, and they have to be licensed with the city. So there's some control there that the city has to exercise and take enforcement action if needed. If, if, so, you know.
And like that one on Eagle Nest would not meet the requirements since we currently got it. Because nobody's living there but I.
Nobody lives there.
Talk about Don's old home?
Yeah. Company of the body uses it as a retreat, apparently.
They do.
I like the idea of having the owner on property. You know, it's going to give them some restriction there, there, and, I mean, almost every city has quiet hours, you know. You're just going to have to enforce them, you've got to abide by, by the quiet hours. You know, it's normally ten o'clock at night to seven AM. If you're making noise, hey, there's going to be an issue.
What do we do when somebody is violating the noise ordinance? Call the sheriff?
Yeah.
Quickly, yeah. But at least there's something in place, and they're like, oh, I didn't know, whatever. So you say, okay, look, you can have this short-term rental, you've got to have a license. And in here, you're going to initial by all these different things, saying, I'll do this, we're going to abide by quiet hours, I'll be on premises, yada, yada. And then they know, like, hey, we have this paper that you signed saying you know this, so here's a five hundred dollar fine, or whatever.
Yeah.
It gives us, like John said, I think it gives us some, some kind of teeth. Otherwise, we're just going to have people flying under the radar, who wants to be the bad guy knocking on the door, you know?
It typically just doesn't happen. That's why I think we need to know.
And we can, we got their license, we can just mail them a bit, a, a fee, a fine. You say, well, on such and such a date, we're here and the witnesses were so and so, or maybe someone who maybe can't do the neighbors or whatever, or someone from the city, if we have a code, anyway, you can say, yeah, we witnessed this and here's your fine, whatever.
Can you do that off of X amount of complaints? Like, is there a certain amount of complaints that come from neighbors that can put that into action? Where you could, one complaint can get a letter sent with the fine.
Yeah.
Can we somehow in the ordinance just add the fine in their utility bill and make it slick and easy?
Directly pause it.
Fager to pay, we'll shut off your water. So, and, and, you know, we can, we can do some more tweaking that, I'll admit that. Short-term rental was probably put together kind of quick, too, but again, it was taken from some of the, I think Mapleton has, they've, they're allowing short-term rentals over there, so some of it was taken from, from Mapleton's ordinance.
And item four here, are you saying that all the parking for the whole event needs to be off the street?
Yeah.
That's reasonable. I mean, our streets are pretty narrow, so.
Yeah.
Or at least one side only, at least, yeah.
But even still, one side only turns it into a one-way street.
Well, that kind of does away with some of the party stuff, too. If you restrict the parking and you have to have sufficient parking.
Yep.
Off-street and not in front of the house and so.
Yeah, I mean, that's not.
Controls it. You've put enough things in here that, you know, somebody have to think twice about doing it or.
I mean, if it's a family coming from out of town to ski for the weekend, like, who cares, right? They might have four cars, but it's not going to be loud, they'll be gone all day, they're coming, neither tired, they're going to go to sleep, you know, like, that's not a big deal, it's the, the venue issue that makes it a problem.
Were they forcing a lot on the street out in our weekends?
Oh, yeah. Yeah, we had, we had one that went clear down and it was going down on Woodland Hills Drive. So they had gone down Eagle's Nest, past, you know, the, what is it, house on the corner. And then they were parking down on Woodland Hills Drive. There was a big, yeah, there was a large group, it was a real.
Normally, I mean, there's a lot of parking actually up on, up on the weekends. There's a lot of lodges up there, there's a lot of parking there. If they were going down that far, there's not that much.
Is the neighbor right above, Nickum?
Peterson's.
I think they said they parked in his driveway, too.
Yeah, yeah, he has a little parking thing in the front of his home. They filled that right up.
You see where there's a graduation party going on at Pope's Home on the seventeen?
Really?
Yeah.
There's going to be one?
Uh-huh, they're advertising it on Facebook.
Oh, yes, oh, yes, yeah.
They said to drink in the evening will be water.
Have, have the church put up a sign, parking five dollars.
Seriously?
Yeah, they should.
They should.
We had to collect trash there last time, Sunday morning, the huge party, we were there.
Yeah.
Also parking on my driveway.
Maybe I'll just make my own sign, church parking five dollars.
On thirteen.
I make a motion to, uh, send the city council ordinance, city amending ten dash eighteen adopting ten dash eighteen dash two short-term rentals.
Okay, is there a second?
I'll start.
Okay, all in favor? Aye. Any opposed?
Aye.
Motion passes.
He doesn't vote.
I guess.
What's that?
He votes.
I didn't, I didn't hear him say.
This is all city council, the mayor doesn't get to vote.
You're right.
This is planning commission, we all get to vote.
Yeah, well, except the alternate.
I just, I just had it, I just had a seventy-three-year-old glitch.
Okay, item fourteen, review and discussion of Summit Creek G four and recommendation to the city council. Uh, I have to apologize to all of you, and I've already apologized to Summit Creek. This kind of caught me off-guard a little bit, and to put it on the agenda. It's been Summit Creek, they're G four, and it's on that big eleven by seventeen sheet, the, the, the top sheet. There's seven lots in there that are included in this particular phase. It's been to our engineers, Jones and the Mill, who looked at it, and they've, against the criteria that the city has for, for final plat, they've looked at it and there were, there were like, I want to say four questions that they had. And Summit Creek has addressed all those four questions to their satisfaction and to ours that review it, myself and Ted Nicholson, our building official.
Now, haven't they been working on this for three years or something?
Well, it seems like it, but, uh, no, but a long time. Um, and the, the preliminary plat was what we approved as, as part of the development agreement. So that was a couple, a year ago or more. So they're coming forward now with the final plat for these seven pieces of property. Now, they're a little different and unique. I'm not, so, as you will notice, this, on the north end of this, there is a, a, um, what they're calling a lane, Sunny Ridge Lane.
Yeah.
Goes on the, on the backside of, of these homes in there. The frontage of those homes is Summit Creek Drive. But these are the stipulations that we've given to Summit Creek. That, that's the lot frontage along Summit Creek Drive. There's to be no fences forward of the plane of the home. And the front of the home is to look like a front of a home along Summit Creek Drive. The backside will be the, will be the garage. They, they have the option of putting resident access on both the front and the rear, or just the front, if they want to walk, have a walk-around from the back where the garage is to come to the front of the residence for guests, they can do that. Um, and that's their option. So these, these lots, they're going to be somewhat uniform-looking as to setbacks and things of that nature. The home construction will be what each homeowner wants to have, but there's some restrictions. There'll be no swimming pools in the front, there's not going to be any barbecue kitchens in the front of the home. It's going to be, it's going to look like a front of any home would be.
Except it won't be a driveway.
Correct.
Just rear, rear entry.
Rear entry.
What about on-street parking in front, is that a thing? Can they?
No.
So that's, like, you can't have visitors parking in the front either.
Correct.
So no parking whatsoever.
Right.
So you wouldn't have a little walkway from there going up, it would have to come from the rear.
Yes. These are unique, these homes in this little group here.
Unique up on them.
Yeah. So Summit Creek's agreed to all of that, they're, they're looking to make it unique as well and are working with us on it. Uh, so they've met all the requirements that we have given them and agreed to it. Um, so they, there are one or two individuals who were going to be here tonight. This didn't get planned until last night when we put the agenda out. And so they had obligations already tonight, and that's the reason they're not here. So again, I apologize for that. But this will go to the city council, and they will be, one or both will be at the city council to, to, uh, answer any questions the city council has. But I'm enough familiar with it, I can answer any questions that any of you might have regarding this. And again, they've received a pretty thorough, I shouldn't say pretty thorough, I think a very thorough review from Jones and the Mill engineers, uh, on it. And they've addressed any, their concerns were, the, the things that Jones and the Mill identified were minor in nature and they've addressed those in, in the plats that they're giving to the city.
So one question I have.
Okay.
Is, is really Nebo Circle on the east end going to be widened? Because it looks like Sunny Ridge Lane goes on the backside of that, that whole lot G four.
Okay, it's a little misleading, Severin, if I'm understanding you correct. Nebo, Nebo Circle on the end of lot two oh one will, will continue.
No, I mean the other end, two oh seven.
Oh, down to two oh seven. That, there will be an exit there.
The exit is a two oh six.
It will tie in just above two oh six.
So that's a one-way?
It's two-way, it'll be two-way.
Why is it getting narrower?
It's forty feet. It's forty feet, at least forty feet for the whole backside except a little bit on two oh six and two oh seven. And that's narrower.
The forty-foot will be part of their garage. It won't be, it won't be a thoroughfare. The lane, the center of the lane is that dark line that you see, uh, going the length of that, of, of that lane there through lots two oh one through two oh five.
And is that sunny lane, is it a one-way or is it?
Oh, it's two-way.
It's two-way.
It's two-way.
It's the same width as.
It'll go, it'll go in and out both, both ways.
It just gets narrow on the one side, so what kind of side?
I guess I'd say it's probably not drawn according to scale there.
None of these other pages shows the lane going through.
Sunny Ridge Lane, private shared driveway.
There'll be easements that every one of those will be signing to one another. So the, the lane will actually be, it's, it's not where it's at. Okay, it's just, the, the, the description is below, below where the lane is. That lane will be, again, that center, the center of that lane will be the, the dark.
The dark line.
Lark line that runs through there, over to two oh five, and then it'll come out, it'll come out over there. The, the part that's labeled Sunny Ridge Lane will actually be part of their garage.
Part of the garage?
Parking, yes.
Okay, all right.
And on the other page, you can kind of see where that goes. This will, I see why they're doing this, it, it helps them control their gates where they want to put them. And also including that in that section, and it takes pressure off of Summit Creek Drive right there.
Yeah.
I think it's funny the way it says private shared.
They, they came up with that or something.
Private shared.
They, yeah, private shared, not so private.
Yeah, and it eliminates, it eliminates five lines.
Summit Creek, yeah, it does.
Yeah, backing out right there, that's.
That'd be a lot.
And that's, you know, that's a slope, yeah, a slope.
Yeah.
Between Nebo Circle and Summit Creek.
So a lot of these homes will have a two-straight front.
They could.
Probably, yeah.
And those slopes side to side, too. Look better around you.
Well, that's, that's R one nineteen.
And this has the overlay zone.
Overlay.
Yes.
R one nineteen overlay.
Yep.
Mountain overlay.
Yep.
Yeah.
That's why the setbacks are a little different, yeah.
What big are the setbacks there?
Down to the bottom of that, it shows, the set, the front setbacks are fifty feet still. Uh, the rear is twenty, and the side is, they're, they're ten feet on each side.
Wow.
The rear looks like it's only five feet.
Again, it's, the forty-foot is part of the rear setback.
The private, sure.
Forty-five. Those are sure small lots, though.
The R four one.
But I think those houses would really be expensive.
Oh, yeah.
This is the R one forty zone, isn't it?
No, it's the R one nineteen.
Well, because it looks like.
With the village overlay.
Mountain overlay.
I'm just looking at the zoning map.
Oh, that'll, that'll change, yeah. That is wrong. Did you get that map off of the?
I, yeah, I just Googled, I just Googled, it was only a map, and that's what came up.
Hmm.
Not so many map.
I.
Twenty, twenty sixteen.
Yeah, it's about ten years old.
Yeah, it's probably.
Twenty sixteen.
It might be on our website, but it's ten years old.
That's all I can find.
I'm surprised it's on our website.
No, I, I'm not sure.
Because we try to monitor that.
It was on, um, was it on the general plan?
Yes.
Well, the general plan is really down the line.
Hey, maybe some of your neighbors really are in your zone and you phased it off of this old map.
Okay, okay, so, I'll take a recommendation then on G four, uh, plat.
May I propose something?
Say again?
You mean a proposal?
A proposal, thank you.
I will propose that we approve a recommendation of Summit Creek's G four lot for approval to the city council.
I'll second that.
Okay. First and the second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, thank you. Item fifteen is a discussion item. It's been suggested that on occasion, people have vacated a house, left animals there until they could come back and get them. Sometimes they're there for a couple of weeks. The animals go unattended, they're barking and whatever else, and just causing a general disturbance. It's, I'm told any kind, but primarily dogs, I think, and that they've just been left there, and, and the owners will eventually come back, but in the meantime, there's nobody there to control them or to answer questions about them or anything else. So the thought was, we don't have any ordinance against somebody doing that. We, we have the ordinance of the behavior of the animal, but, um, so I wanted to get your, your general thoughts of whether we ought to bend one of our ordinances to, to make that a violation, to leave animals in a vacated home unattended.
So we euthanize them?
What if we just, what if we just forward the homeowner's information to PETA?
Say that again?
It's just forward the, the homeowner's information to PETA.
Oh.
An animal control.
Well, that's, that's a possibility.
Well, but if they're not living in the home...
Well, they'll find them.
So this is not...
Or they'll go get the animals, take care of them.
If you got dogs locked in a house...
They'll get, they'll go in the house.
Really?
Yeah, if they're not at home for a certain period of time, they'll want to...
Animal enforcement, we would just call them.
I don't know how it is here. That's Caseville all day long.
Wow.
Well, I know, we do have some pretty active animal control county, county people. And, and they'll, they'll issue citations to, uh, barking dogs and crowing roosters and, and dogs wandering the city without leashes and things like that, if they know about it. They're, they're, they're pretty good about following through and doing things. So, do you think maybe, maybe it's already addressed? Or, I mean, I...
I just don't think the city is gonna enforce it. If they did, they won't have time. They have a lot of other issues, I think, that are probably more pressing.
Is this coming from neighbors?
Ask the, ask the zone enforcement officer.
Well, that's what I'm saying. I mean, he's bliss as it is.
It's coming from a council member who has gotten complaints from people.
We should tell the council member to tell the people to call animal control, or to call law enforcement, or to call PETA.
Yeah. There's people that are, yeah, very, very hyper-aware about this stuff.
Okay.
If anything, I think we need a time limit. You know, if the baby moves and they leave there, force there for two more days, it's not a big deal, but maybe a month, a month intended.
Maybe that's the...
I still think it's a citizen obligation to call the appropriate authorities.
Just like, I mean, if it's a barking dog, it's a nuisance, yeah. Yeah. If your house is vacant, and you got an animal out of control, or an animal there...
What about a situation where somebody goes on vacation or a couple of weeks, leaves their animals there, and has someone come in to feed them, but the people aren't there the whole day, you know, just once a day, they come in. We're gonna call that a violation?
Depends on if the dog's barking, if it's a dog, because they will respond to that. We've had a couple of those situations where, uh, a friend was coming to feed the dog, and they were gone for a week, and they didn't get over there, and the dog insists on barking, and so animal control came, and, and in one case, took the dog. Um, but, um, so is there a general feeling that you probably don't need an ordinance? It's just let the people know that, I mean, I don't know what animal, animal control, I mean, if the dog, they got a barking dog, uh, there's some, some thing that the dog is doing that is causing the nuisance or the disturbance, in the case of a dog. So I'm not sure they'd show up to a vacant home and, and take an animal in custody. What, there's no, if there's no city ordinance against them, I don't know. That's what...
I don't know that either. Maybe that's something we need to...
I know we've got all sorts of it. We have an ordinance that deals with, with animals. And, as, as I remember, there's something in there about when the animals are a nuisance. But I don't know that we put any teeth into, you know, as to what happens. How do you deal with that situation? Maybe that's what we ought to look at.
Maybe need to do a little more research on that and see, okay.
See what's already there now, and whether or not there's something that could be leveraged that's already in there. And, um, I think we ought to first tell the city council that when they get their complaints, have you called animal control? Have you called PETA?
Right, I mean, there's just, I just don't think we're equipped to even deal with that kind of stuff, really.
I don't know how frequently it happens either, somebody, I mean, if they've got animals, usually they're caring for them and watching out for them and...
Yeah, I can't imagine leaving our dog for days on that stuff.
Yeah.
My dog is far more pampered than I am. No way is that dog gonna get left.
Okay, I'll do some more research on that, and then we'll, we'll go from there. We won't take any action for the time being. Um, the next item is update on the general plan. Um, the city approved a, a grant, uh, that the state gave to us to engage the services of a company that's going to help in writing both a general plan and a strategic plan. A request for proposal went out by the city to interested individuals and/or companies, and we had, what was it, five solicit, five, uh, responses to it. Those were all evaluated in a rather strict sense by the, by the city, and Severin and Lori were part of that evaluation. There was a scroll, a scoring process that was used. Ted Nicholson has done many, many of these and kind of oversaw this whole process to make sure it was, it was done properly. And in the end, then, a company was selected, uh, actually of Sunrise Engineering, uh, who is our building inspector component. But they have a planning department that's separate from that. And so, uh, they're the ones that got selected to, uh, fulfill this grant, who'll be working with, uh, city committee in putting together focus groups, uh, doing surveys, whatever else might be necessary for the city to update its general plan, as well as a strategic plan, which we have never done before. Um, the idea, a strategic plan, as it's been explained to me, is where do we want to end up? And the general plan is, how do we get there? The goals and things that we need to do now in order to reach our strategic plan, whatever that is. So both Severin and Lori are on this, um, we're calling it a community development committee, and Severin is the liaison between us and the committee, um, and will be potentially coming back to us with maybe some assignments, things to do, updates, where things are at, where, what's kind of going on. And this is designed to go on for probably the next nine months, as far as activity and completion go. So within the nine, in nine months, we should have a product that we will look at, and I think, if we're doing it right, we'll be looking at it way before nine months and deciding, well, this, this is good, let's incorporate this into the general plan, uh, maybe not this, we'll set that aside, and, and we'll be working on that part of things ourselves on the general plan. So, uh, there's...
A lot of the, I think, from my perception, Lori, if you agree, that the planning commission under these plans are one of the stakeholders, and there is communication with the stakeholders throughout the process. And so, I, I think that's probably where, at least initially, where our role starts.
I agree with you, with you on that, yeah. We, we want, we're not gonna sit back in nine months, have them give us a product and, and, uh, because again, our role is looking at it, accepting it, and moving it forward to the city council, uh, who will agree to it or want to tweak it, whatever. And we may want to tweak it as well as time goes on, as we're getting information and updates, and we'll look at how they fit into each section that we have of a general plan. The general, if you haven't looked at it, I would encourage you, it's online, encourage you to go online and take a look at it, read through it, get some familiarity with it right now, and, and that's what will be updated. There may be some things that won't require a whole lot of changes or updating. There may be sections that require a lot. There potentially even may be a new section that we haven't considered before, uh, in there. So it's, it's very open, uh, what to, to the city needs. So that's, that's kind of where we're going with that, and Lori and Severin will be a major part of that, of that work, meetings that they'll be participating in and having, and, and, uh, helping this committee organize these things with the assistance of this company that's going to be, uh, integral to helping the city put this together. So, did you have anything else to add, Severin, your knowledge?
Lori, some voting members on the...
The lead did vote against each other on the election. They cancelled each other out, isn't it?
Some of, some of the things were very close with the...
Oh, mm-hmm.
Yeah.
And the top two, I had people pointing at each other.
Yeah.
So, I like my setup.
I think there was some good competition there. I know some of them...
I mean, a lot of the plans were really very relevant. I was, I was impressed with all of them. I thought virtually any one of them would have done a effective job.
Yeah, that was kind of the question I had.
A return of a critical, a lot of people buying, buying the product.
Appreciate Lori and Severin's willingness to take that assignment, and we'll hear more from that in the future. Anything else that we need to discuss or talk about?
I think the motion may adjourn.
I second it.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Went a little bit late tonight, but...
Sorry.
We got off early last night.